Due to the Governor's statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and current public health guidelines for social distancing, I've determined that it's not prudent for members of the village board or staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending this meeting by video conference. Those same conditions requiring barring access to the public for in-person attendance. In light of those limitations, the public is invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform or by phone as indicated in the meeting agenda to comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements for virtual meetings. Tonight's meeting is being recorded. And Bill, can I ask you to take attendance and make sure everyone can be heard?
Yes, Trustee O'Reilly, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Chrismer, are you present? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Trustee Mishout, are you here and can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Borowski, are you present and can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee O'Connor, are you there and can you hear me?
I am and I do.
Thank you. And President Jacob?
Yes, you can hear me and I'm here.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks Deputy Clerk Balling, I appreciate that. Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag. United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which is Spain.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. The first item on the agenda is the homeowners associations that are visiting tonight is Bill Handel from Woods End here by any chance or anybody from Woods End? If not, what about Country Club Estates Jay Griffiths? All right, Jay, you're not here either. Well, then we'll move, we'll move right away to the next item of the agenda. I do want to ask also before I move there is, and I don't see Barbara Clipper, are you here by any chance? Barbara was going to join tonight too to give us an update on the, the resolution that was passed on the Route 53 task force, but I don't, I don't see her tonight, so.
I'll send her a text. She was waiting to get a heads up on when.
Okay, so what we're going to do is I just want to make sure she will bring, is everyone okay if we bring her on for a few minutes at the beginning? I omitted her from the agenda, not intentionally, it just, when we were putting it together, I left her off. So any objections to having her up front?
Not from me.
I take silence as an okay, that's a yes. I just want to make sure, okay. All right, then let's move to the sheriff's report and I know, I see Sergeant Ryan Amber, I thank you for joining tonight. You look pretty casual too, by the way.
I figured why not? I wear that monkey suit too many hours a day.
Monkey suit?
It's at that point where I've got three years left and I start calling it that, so.
Well, you want to give us an update?
Sure, yeah. So per your email today, I did some digging around and touched on those topics. The criminal damage over at the Park District, it looks like that report was taken back on May 16th that was called in by Kent Tinucci, I guess he's the president of the Park District, referenced graffiti they found in one of the tunnels underneath 83 there. The deputy, I spoke to the deputy today, it was not gang-related graffiti, it looked more like probably younger kids spray painting their names and some other things on there, nothing consistent with gangs in the area. And then I talked to Deputy Oaks today and I guess he was informed that lighting in the tunnel has been a problem in the past. So I don't know if that's something they're looking at trying to correct. But either way, an extra patrol was placed on there for three months, starting back in May when that report was taken.
Any questions on that from the board? And Rita, you exchanged some emails on that.
Didn't even know about it.
There was additional vandalism. The dam at Long Meadow Lake and Creek. Somebody used a power saw to disconnect the connection that creates the dam. That was, I talked to Kent a couple nights ago when, when I heard about it from a resident. And he said that, you know, there was this additional intentional kind of vandalism over there as well. I don't, I don't know if the sheriff was called on that or not.
All I know is Kent filed the police report because he contacted me and I asked him to do that, so.
Yeah.
And he had mentioned both of those and he filed the police report.
On the two graffiti incidents or the dam?
Both, both. There were, I believe it was both, as my understanding was.
Oh, I see. So it's all three incidents?
Because I, I believe, I, you know, I don't know Rita, so don't, don't. The problem is what I don't receive and we don't receive is we don't get that level of detail, we never have.
Yeah.
On the information, which is, well, Ryan knows that's one of my issues since I was an HOA president, right?
Yeah, but what, Bill, what you got to understand is, you know, like with the graffiti, you know, I don't know if that was one incident where it was done on the same time and then it was just discovered in two different places. The other thing is when, you know, like when Deputy Oaks is down there or the afternoon deputies, people who are down there regularly, they're pretty good about reaching out to me to shoot me an email and say, hey, just so you know, this incident occurred in Long Grove. It may be something they might be interested in knowing. However, when those deputies are working in a district car or somebody else is working that area, they may not put as much significance on a report, you know, where something was cut or some, you know, spray paint was found in the tunnel and they might not let me know. So I do count on the village as well to get back to me so I can try to dig into it as much as I can to get you, you know, all the information you need. Same with, you know, like when cars get broken into, right? We go through this several times every year where we get them. And now is the time of year when kids are out of school and they're going to start to happen more and more again. So when those start to happen in clusters rather than just one off, you know, here or there, where we get two or three, maybe over a week or a couple week period. I've, you know, informed those deputies and their command on the road to make sure they're just dropping me an email so I can kind of keep a running tally, you know, of where they're occurring so I can pass it along to you guys to let you know. But the bottom line is, you know, as always, we harp on it over and over, I found here a bunch of cars, not a bunch, but we had, let's see, unlocked vehicle overnight, unlocked vehicle overnight, unlocked vehicle, or unlocked vehicles overnight between May 23rd and June 1st. That were either gone through or were at pocket change and some other miscellaneous items were taken. So two of those were on heritage. Let's see, somebody went into an open garage, it was left overnight and took a bicycle on Tall Oaks. And one occurred at Buffalo Creek at the Forester, so it was actually a Forester.
Yeah, the reason I know about that and thank you for bringing those up is that I bumped into Deputy Oaks last Friday and he mentioned that to me, so. You know, and I think there was an ask to, to, you know, put the reminder out to everyone again to make sure you lock your cars at night. So, because these are all cars, right?
Yeah, and you know, some of the video footage that was obtained by the deputies show that they actually occurred early morning, like between 5:30 AM and 6:00.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so that's more, leading me more to believe that it is a resident, probably a younger resident, somebody's out rather than just a stranger because it's already daylight by that time. So for a stranger to just pop into a random neighborhood in Long Grove and go looking for unlocked car doors at that time of morning, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, yeah, you know, it could be somebody from out of the area. But, you know, that's just kind of what I surmise from it, so.
There was, there was one, one other item too that I asked you to look into too, and that was the cut-through traffic, right?
Right, so what I'm being told is, and I experienced it firsthand, is Route 83 is under some type of construction, right? Where it's on the one lane. And Kruger has now started, right, the construction in Kruger, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm guessing these, these drivers are trying to use that as a cut-through, right? Between 83 and 60, 83 over by the Diamond Lake area. So when Deputy Oaks comes back to work on Tuesday, Thursday, he's going to try to find a suitable place along the roadway, maybe on Ossage, we're thinking. Somewhere there on that long stretch probably where they're getting up to speed, to put the speed board out. In addition to that, he'll try to run some extra enforcement out there and we'll pass that information to the other ships as well on the afternoon shift.
Very much appreciate.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just saying, this is Dan, sorry, I'm still not on video. Very much appreciate that. I did hear that like a lot as I walked around campaigning at the very beginning of April. Several residents on Ossage mentioned it, so I think it's not just the current construction, I think that's an ongoing thing, so sure would appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, you know, and I've lived in this county my whole life and I've been here a long time, but I've never really heard of that area as being a cut-through. You know, when you look at it on the map, it actually is a pretty good cut-through. So it probably is saving some people, but as long as we can find a place there or even a neighbor who's not opposed to maybe having a long easement, you know, in front of their home because, you know, it's a trailer that's about five feet wide or so and it runs off of batteries, solar powered batteries. So, you know, we, we can tend to leave it in a place for seven to 10 days at a time.
There was a gentleman who called me from that neighborhood, I talked to him at length and I have his phone number. I did return his call, he is not, we, we still haven't connected on the phone, but I can leave another. I also asked him if he could indicate anything in terms of direction or time of day, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make sure to tell the guys to hit it hard, you know, morning rush hour and afternoon rush hour. I'm going to guess that's going to probably pick up even more. You know, that's the thing with these, these apps out there and stuff, people are going to say, hey, you can cut through here, you can, you know, shave four minutes off your commute, right? Like it's a big deal, but if I live there too, I wouldn't want to see that increased traffic at all, especially this time of year with kids out playing and stuff, so.
There is a no-through sign, there's no-through signs on either end.
Is, is that a twin? Behind you?
So you wanted to get in on the action there real quick. So, but yeah, so that I can't give you a timeframe, but we do have two to three speed boards. So as long as they're all up and running, it shouldn't be an issue for me to try to get it out there next week sometime. And I'll drop you a line just to let you know when it's out there and where, where it is exactly.
Now, it says no-through on either side of it, is that enough for you to give a ticket if somebody cuts through?
Problem is, we got to prove they cut through from start to finish. You know, they can always say, hey, I was looking for an address, I was buying something off a Craigslist and I'm turned around and I'm lost, right? So it's actually hard to prove that intent unless you watch the car go from, you know, 60, 83 all the way out to 83. But, you know, I think between the, the speed board and actually if someone, you know, if I can get the phone number from that guy, maybe he'd be willing to let a deputy sit in his driveway too, you know, for some visibility.
I think I know who it is, is his last name begin with an S? I can't hear you, man.
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, then it's the wrong person, okay.
Could you clarify what signage you're talking about, Bill?
Yeah, so there's, right off of 83 and then when you enter the other subdivision where like 60 dead ends into the subdivision, there's signs that have the speed limit posted and they also say no-through traffic. On both.
Has that always been there?
Always been there, yeah. I have pictures too on my cell phone, I could send them, I took them. But yeah, it clearly is marked no-through traffic.
Because I use that periodically.
Your ticket's in the mail.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if I get a chance, I'll email you the pictures because I actually took the pictures. The other thing that I'm going to put this out here that we need to do is that whole stretch of Ossage does not have one speed limit sign on it and we need to put some up there. You have it marked when you come in, but it's not when you go down the street, so. You know, it's posted, you know, that I think through the subdivision, but it doesn't, you know, down Ossage, there's not one, 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 one speed limit sign, so.
Yeah, and what's happening, that neighborhood appears to be turning over, there's more young families moving in.
Yeah, and I drove through there on a weekend and I saw these little kids riding their tricycles down the driveway and that just scares me. You know, because they came to the edge of Ossage, so I, I think I understand the concern there.
Yeah, for sure. So like, yeah, anytime you guys interact with the public and they let you know that, if you can let me know that, you know, as well, that'd be great. Because then I can do something about it. They might not be, you know, relaying that information on their own to the sheriff's office, so.
One more thing too, while we have Bill, Bill was working on the lighting in the tunnel, there was some lights out. Do you have anything to report on that?
Well, we do have a, we do have a contract now, I forget the contractor we're working, that we're working with. But it's going to be an LED system and it's going to be not just the malfunctioning fixture in the middle, but we're going to put in, I think, four in total, the three or four in total LEDs, which should illuminate it much further. ELO was great with us and got out there and addressed the graffiti right away. Unfortunately, it wasn't coated, so we ended up painting over it, which is fine, that's the alternate plan for applications like that on smooth concrete. So we should have, it'll be more illuminated. But that'll, that should be done probably within the next 30 days.
Much appreciated, Bill, thank you. Any other questions for Sergeant Amber? All right, if not, I, Ryan, thank you for joining tonight and I appreciate you looking into those things as well.
Anytime, anytime, I don't mind at all, just anytime you guys need to know something, reach out to me and I'll get you an answer.
No, I appreciate it, yep, thanks, thanks so much.
But have a great night.
You too.
Yeah.
I see Barbara join, thank you Barbara for joining. You know, the joint resolution passed, what, last week, right? So this is the, the organization, the task force to study what to do with Route 53 right away and you know, I talked to you on Saturday, I know that Rita was trying to get you on the, on the, on the last meeting, we had a pretty full schedule. But it's great that you're here tonight and maybe you could take us through a little bit about, you know, what that is and what, you know, what you've been doing in regards to that, I think that would be great. I don't, you know, I don't know if 10, 15 minutes tops or something like that.
Okay, I'll watch the time, I know you have a long night ahead of you.
Yes.
Can anybody hear me? Okay, unmuted. So we did a lot of grassroots work on Zoom this year, but obviously like everyone else, we had struggles building a team. Our team, we call ourselves the grassroots, with the Green Corridor Coalition. Rita is on it, Mike Sorlito, Tony Dean, people from all around, Openlands, Sierra Club, us, Friends of Indian Creek Wetlands and so on. We've been meeting throughout the year. We brought legislation, Senator Bush picked it up, originally it was carried by Senator McConkey and Mary Emily Allen. It was supposed to pass last year, but because of the pandemic and the budget and the election coming up and the General Assembly was not meeting frequently, I'm sure you guys can all sympathize, so the bill didn't pass last year. Senator Bush picked it up this year and Dan Didich carried it in the House. And it did pass. We were able in November, we got the Lake County Board to vote in support of it in their legislative agenda. So that meant their lobbyist was lobbying for it too, they, he signed on and slipped in favor for the county board, that was a big deal. We also had another piece of legislation, which was to rescind, so in 1993, let me back up. In order for the tollway to do a project, they have to get permission from the General Assembly. They got the permission in 1993. And for some reason, that permission was not sunsetted. So they went at it three times with that same permission. And we think it's just a bad government thing, so we brought a, another resolution to rescind that permission. So if they decide to come at it again, they're going to have to go get permission from the General Assembly again. That, by the time our lawyers got through with it and got Senator Bush the language, it was like only like three or four weeks before the end of the session. She introduced it, but it didn't go anywhere, so that'll be brought back either in the veto session or next spring. This one did pass though, to form a task force, I have a memo I prepared in April, Rita, did they get that memo or?
Which one?
The memo I gave you, you said, I sent an update of what we'd been working on.
Oh, I believe Bill has it.
Yeah, you know, I can send it out, I didn't send it out, my apologies.
Because there's a link to the actual bill there, so what it does, it creates.
I did send them the link to the bill though.
So you all know what it is?
Yeah, yeah, and not only that, a newspaper clipping too, so I did do that.
Yes, okay, so that passed. Also, when the Lake County Board voted on their gas tax increase, we gave them a list of things that we would like to see, the committee of jurisdiction. And a lot of those were transportation improvements that we're all trying to get to alleviate the pressure to build Route 53 and 120 together, so that happened as well. I'm looking at my notes here, sorry. We sent out a press release after the passage of the resolution. Daily Herald pick it up, picked it up, they've already run an article. The Chicago Tribune is writing a feature story, it should come out, I think the reporter said he was handing it in today. So it'll be up to his editors when it's published, but it should be published in the next few days, so I'll make sure that Rita gets a copy to everyone. And that, I spent, I spent probably about 10 hours scouting locations on the corridor to take the photographer and the reporter. I took them on Surrey Lane, Spring Valley Road, I think it's called, I took them to Heron Creek Forest Preserve and the, the Heron Rookery across the street on Route 22, those were the spots in Long Grove. It couldn't have been more perfect, an elderly lady with her adult, young adult grandson were walking on Spring Valley Road and, and she stopped and was interviewed by the reporter saying, where are the animals going to go? And they tried to take my land and it was just so perfect. And when we got to the forest preserve, it was a mom's workout group that had babies in strollers, single and tandem strollers. And it was a woman whose business is to help moms still get exercise. So it kind of showed like this, a small scale complementary economic development, so they took pictures of that. And they took some pictures of the Heron Rookery. So that should come out any day, we'll make sure you get it. We did ask, and Tony Dean funded, I don't know if you all are familiar with Mike Trupa, Mike Trupa Communications. Previously, he had worked for the Village of Hawthorne Woods on the issue of Route 53, he's worked, he worked for the Environmental Law and Policy Center in the 1990s, he's been working on this issue for a long time. The Village of Hawthorne Woods during the pandemic was not, they were not retaining him any longer, so we convinced Tony Dean and Tony Dean is now funding his work. So we have the media professional to help us really get the word out about this very special place.
We, we worked with him with Mancino back a number of years ago too, right? So I was part of that when Mancino was mayor of Hawthorne Woods, yeah.
Mike is really, he's an excellent communications director, but he has so many contacts in the media. I don't think we would have had this feature story if it weren't for that. Daily Herald reached out to me again today. I mentioned, they, they kind of asked me what the next steps are, so I'll tell you what I told them. The next steps will be for the General Assembly and the governor basically to make the appointments to the task force. Like the Village of Long Grove will get an appointment to the task force, so it'll either be your president or whoever he, he appoints to take his place. And so will the towns of Hawthorne Woods, Mundeline and Grayslake, as well as some environmental organizations, Lake County Stormwater Management, Lake County Bureau of Tourism and so on. So those appointments will happen, my experience is it usually, it'll take a couple of months probably before we get the appointments. Senator Bush wants to be on the task force and she's gone the whole month of August, so my guess is we won't start till September, I could be wrong. They may, maybe they won't wait for her, I'm not sure. But I think that's about when we'll start, they're going to have four meetings at least, the, the resolution says at least four meetings and they report back to the General Assembly by December 31st of 2022. So we have a year and a half to figure this out. The other thing is we're working on some tours, Senator Bush had asked us for, she's been asking for a couple of years for a tour. So they verbally heard about how special this place is, they've read reports about, but they've really never seen it firsthand. And what was that, you said Rita, you had a great, the eye buys, was that the saying?
Right, yeah, yeah.
The eye buys, so we're arranging two tours, I think is what it's going to end up being, a Southern End Tour and a Northern End Tour in the Prairies. And we're hoping each group of trustees and mayors, like for example, on the Southern End, that, that Long Grove and Hawthorne Woods kind of help, you know, as hosts, we'll, we'll be running it, we're going to have a progressive lunch along with it. But that you'll be showing the, the folks in Grayslake and Mundeline how special that is in your area and then the same thing in the Northern End. Right now, we're working with the Attorney General's Office for the State of Illinois around the Open Meetings Act to figure out how we do that and stay compliant with Open Meetings Act. We may have to open it to the public, I, we're just working out those details right now. We're hoping to get the Northern End one done by the end of July because the Prairies up here are so pretty, in July that really is their peak. And it possibly will have both of them in July, or we may end up having the Southern End one into September or perhaps when the leaves are changing, it's also very pretty then as well. The Daily Herald said they would like to come with us and, and also kind of do a feature on how beautiful of a place it is we're trying to protect. So that, those details haven't been worked out, we haven't agreed to that because we don't know if the elected officials that want to go are going to want the media there as well. But that, that is another opportunity to kind of have a steady drumbeat of showcasing how special this place is. I think that's all I have for you.
Barbara won't say it, but she and Mike Trupa and Stacy and several other people have put in countless hours and thought and planning and binging to get, to get us this far, and this is a really big deal that, that the governor has approved this task force, it's huge for us, so.
It's a great opportunity.
Hopefully we'll be able to get most, if not all, of the corridor preserved.
Yeah, we've been doing, Rita can tell you, probably, I don't know, at least 20 hours of strategic planning in the month of May, getting ready for the release of the task force as a coalition. So we're going to be doing grassroots organizing in the communities for the next year and a half. We have a big plan between media strategies and, and, and community engagement and engagement with the elected officials and I don't know how much I should get into, we do something we call power mapping, it's just doing background research on, on elected officials to try to decide who might be more inclined to be with us and who wouldn't before we meet with them. And the, the Grayslake Village Board, four of the six trustees have committed to me personally, that they support the general idea of protection and a trail and a recreational area with some economic development, I'm sure. And we haven't met yet, we were waiting till we finished our strategic planning, but the Village of Mundeline Board, at least four, maybe even five of them have indicated that they are supportive of the idea as well, so.
Yeah, I was going to, also, Board, Lake County Board Member Mara Altenberg is here tonight, she raised her hand. I think she wants to say something too. Mara?
Thank you. Barbara, thank you so much for all of your work on this. There are several Lake County Board members who are very interested in the work you're doing and several of us want to be involved in the task force and the coming work to preserve this land and several of us have been talking about it for quite some time. So we're very excited about the possibilities and we can't think, you know, can't thank you enough, you and your team members so far. And I will definitely be in touch with you this summer to find out what more we can do to work with you on this.
Definitely, and I agree with you, Mara was very supportive in the, when it went to the Legislative Committee and supporting us as well. And definitely make sure you all get invited to the tour as well.
Thanks, Mara.
Barbara, I, I do the communications for the village and, and I'm wondering, and now that we're on social media too, if you could periodically give us a bite to put out, to keep people in tune with what you're doing?
I'd be happy to.
Great.
I'd be happy to, and like I said, we'll send you this Chicago Tribune piece because I think the photographer left us, once we left Long Grove, we kind of did the whole corridor, all the way up to Liberty Prairie Reserve actually. So that it's really going to feature Long Grove primarily in the photos, so.
Terrific.
We have a lot of work ahead of us. Not, not to, this is not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination. Both meeting with elected officials, the tours, the grassroots organizing, but we're ready for it.
Barbara, you are on the right path, this is exactly what needed to get done to move. We've been anxious to move to the next step of this project, so I'm so glad your group is, you know, that's exactly where we need to go, so.
Thank you, and, and we're so lucky to have bipartisan support, I should mention, so Senator Bush and Senator, sorry, Representative Didich carried the bill, but Senator McConkey and Representative Boss also co-sponsored it. So we're, we're very lucky to have that bipartisan support, it's a huge deal.
Yeah, it is, this has been going on, I've used to cover this as a journalist 20 years ago, I mean, this is, it's been a long.
It's a lot older than that.
A long time. I am very excited to see, you know, where this is going to go and right, there is a lot more work to be done, but there's a lot of supportive people, a lot of legislators in our area who really want to work with your team.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Even the Farm Bureau in that daily, I don't know if you all saw the Daily Herald article, but you know, they've traditionally been an opponent because obviously for the agricultural land prices, they wanted to sell them for 53, but even they acknowledge that Route 53 is a done deal, I don't know. I don't know if you all saw that, but they said, if we're going to do this, it can't just be a good plan. It has to be an exceptional plan. And we thought, we'll take it. The fact that they're acknowledging that it's a done deal, which has been our message. Two things we've been focusing on is 53 is dead, we're moving on. And the second thing that we're trying to focus on is the taxpayers already own it. So they they don't get any big ideas that we should have to pay for it all over again, so.
Well, Barbara, thank you very much for that update. That was great. And thanks for all the work that you've been doing for us. It's great to see the progress.
Happy to, happy, anytime you guys want me to come on in the summertime. I usually teach when you have your village board meetings at the college, but I'm off till end of August now, so happy to be here.
Well, hopefully we get to meet in person again soon, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Getting a little old, so thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move us on to the next item of the agenda, which is consideration of resolution. Approving intergovernmental agreement for the installation of buffer planting at the Buffalo Creek Forest Reserve and rescinding the approval of the prior agreement that we did last October. Now, we discussed it at the last board meeting. There was some confusion on it. You know, there 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 was, you know, changes to the agreement from what we approved. In other words, they want 95% of the money upfront, which is not an issue for Country Club Estates. There was some changes to the warranty language. And they, you know, the parking thing changed. So we, the the resolution that you have before you tonight, there's a timeframe issue here, too. In other words, in order to get this over the goal line, to get it done, actually, in early spring of next year, they've got to start all the work now with the Army Corps of Engineers to get it going, plus the approvals they need to do through the county board, et cetera. So but the the resolution you have in front of you has two things in there. One is to to continue to work through parking, how we might be able to to solve the parking problem we have down there. And two, it it mentions the the warranty concern, although it it doesn't sound like that that's going to change. Although it sounds like we've got a commitment from the Forest Reserve that they're going to 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 work with us on this. But in in fact, we we also met with the Forest Reserve last Friday. Bill Balling and I did, and Mara is who's on the line with us here tonight. She was there as well. Randy Seabock from the Forest Reserve. Ty wasn't able to make it, but just trying to figure out how we could put maybe parking on the driveway that goes into the soccer field. So that's not worked out yet, but there's a commitment to work with us to figure out a way to 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 augment parking and maybe come up with a, you know, an additional arrangement that that handles the parking. But to get that done before this agreement gets signed would be probably impractical at this point. But there is a willingness from the the county board, as well as the Forest Reserve, to work with us on that. So I don't know, Mara is here tonight to to, you know, answer any questions you might have. But she's been very supportive of this since she stepped into her role and has been really driving this and has been, you know, helpful to all of us to try to get to it, get us to this point, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we've been working on this for over a year, almost a year and a half. And I, you know, it was just kind of kicking around for a few years. And I really got, I was able to bring all parties to the table and to make a really serious commitment to get this project done. The Forest Reserve has, in the past, hasn't been involved in a lot of these types of deals where, you know, something went amiss and they'll come back to the table and they want to work with you to fix it. So as I'm told, is a rarity. And they've been a wonderful partner this year and so has the county DOT. And they really want to help and make this this whole project work out. And all the parties have worked very diligently all year long to get us to this point. And now we're getting to a point where we're at a tight timeline and we really want to be able to do the plantings in the spring. So they, we need to pass it by the end of June so the county board can approve it. And if you pass it tonight, they are, the DOT is going to be calling the Army Corps of Engineers tomorrow to make sure that we stay on the the best schedule to get it done. So your mayor has worked very hard this year on this. And, you know, I'm feeling really good about it. The Forest Reserve really has been very well intentioned in rectifying what was an unfortunate, I feel, kind of a miscommunication about what occurred. And everybody's, you know, everybody wants to come together and make the residents of Long Grove happy and and do these plantings. And I think, you know, I think that whole scenic area, that area of that buffer will be replaced. And I think people, you know, will be, will be much happier for it. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. But I'm hoping, you know, there's been so many hours put into this. And I hope you understand this was a, this was a big undertaking. And it's exciting that, you know, it's finally going to go over the finish line, I hope. So thank you all.
Do we have better drawings than the one that's in the packet today?
No, I think that's what we have. You have the, you you have that drawing, but that's, that's still, we still have some, Vic, correct me if I'm wrong, though, we still have some approval on the final, final on that, too, right?
Well, the the reason I ask, I, maybe I didn't, maybe I've never seen it before, didn't register, is that that the beauty of the old way was that it, no matter where you were, it, the the view was blocked. And yet this just appears that that all of the, all of the planting is at the entrances and and not breaking that visual plane that 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 the previous growth did.
Yeah, it's a little different. And I I can try to present the diagram here, but it's it's
Yeah, no, I'm, well, I'm looking at it.
You're looking at, yeah, I mean, what it was, though, is when you go down both streets, Shiloh and what's the other one, Lincoln? You know, Shenandoah and Lincoln. I mean, it, you know, it it does a nice job because that's where it opens up a lot. There is some brush that goes along Checker Road that that provides some screening. It's not pretty brush, but it does. So that's where it was wide open. And when you drive down those roads, that's when you you really see Lake Cook Road from there. So that's what it was really designed to do.
Was just, just for the, just for those roads?
For those roads.
To block it for those roads.
Yeah, and if you drive it, though, too, that will do a pretty good job. I mean, you can drive it. It'll do a pretty good job of, because that's where the big openings are of of, because you got, you got other, you know, shrubbery or whatever that's, that's, you know, along the side of the Checker Road that is 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 still providing some screening, so.
Nothing compared to what it was.
Nothing like it was, right? There were tons of trees there, I know, I know. Yeah.
Yeah, but you, I think we need to understand that over the coming years, the the birds are going to drop all their little seeds all over again. And what used to be there, chances are, is going to reappear anyway. So it's just, it doesn't help.
It's a wait 20 years?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't help, it it doesn't make a difference today. But I I think this is a great effort and and
I didn't say it wasn't a great effort.
No, no.
And I didn't say it isn't attractive.
No, I
I'm clearly pointing out that it is not providing what used to be there.
Right.
I agree with you, Bobby.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not disagreeing. That was just my input. I think it's a, it's a great effort and I appreciate the the time that Mara and Bill have put into it from my, from my corner, you know, that's great.
So Bill, what are the next steps in resolving the the parking matter, then? Well, I mean, basically, the resolution gives me and the the village manager the the powers or whatever to continue working on the parking piece, right? So some of it's improved because of all the no parking signs that we've put up. But there seemed to be an interest in, you know, we we were talking this past Friday about trying to put parking spaces in the drive into the soccer field. And there seemed to be an interest to to figure out how to do that. And in fact, the the Forest Reserve might even be able to pay for the paving to add a turnaround and so forth and a and a fence to to put parking along that driveway. So, you know, I I I feel good like there's cooperation going on. But to get it done before we need to, I think it's going to take a little longer. You know, we have to pass this resolution to keep this moving.
There was a very positive, sorry, there was a very positive willingness on the part of the Forest Reserve to work on this with us this summer and try to get a solution. So that was, Bill and I felt really good after that meeting that we were going to have
That's great to hear. That's great to hear because I use that often. And I think we definitely need, we definitely need to try and get that solved. Are you looking for a motion to pass the resolution as is?
I am.
I'd move that.
Okay, move by Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee O'Connor. It's a roll call and Deputy Clerk Balling, can you do the roll call?
Yes, Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Michal.
Hi.
Trustee Varoski.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mara. Great news. Thank you.
It was nice to see everybody. I have been in meetings the entire day. I'm probably going to drop out soon. But I'm excited to work with you all. I was excited to work on this and I'm excited to work with you on future projects. And Long Grove is really budding, I mean, these days. I've seen so many more people coming back since COVID is moving down. And there's so many great new businesses there. And, you know, please feel free to reach out to me if anything you need, any projects. I'm here, I'm around, and I'm very happy to work with all of you. So hopefully we're going to get this all done. And I'm excited for the future. I'm very excited about the 53 property. I think that's going to be such a nice thing for your area. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mara. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the next item of the agenda, and I'm going to ask for some help on this one. Either Village Engineer Perry or Bill Balling, and that's the award of the bid for the Reconstruction of Stumpel Municipal Parking Lot, right? So I'm going to let you take us through everything. And I don't know if it's going to be you, Bill, or Jeff.
I'll just, I'll just open up and Jeff is going to present the recommendations. But we, the good news is we got really good bids. We got two really good bids. They're solid. They're better bids than what we would have gotten a year or so ago. And Jeff has been able to confirm that. We've got a little bit of discussion in terms of who actually is the low bid. We had one of the bidders make a arithmetic mistake and changes who gets the issue. The the structural issue of the recommendation is we're recommending that the, that the entire amenity package be authorized with the 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 base parking lot and not, and that the village can select through authorization of task order which ones can proceed. If we want to do that tonight, we can do that tonight. If we want to do it later, that's fine, too, but we'll have the authorization in place. So we'll have, we actually have a contract ready, ready to move. The, we we don't do any construction until we receive the grant award. So even though we're authorizing it tonight, we are not permitted to begin the project until we have confirmation of the grant award, and Jeff is working on that as well. So with that opening, Jeff, if you could walk through the the board, what the the bids reveal to us and your overall assessment, please.
Could you do so? So last week on Wednesday, we opened the bids for the Stumpel Parking Lot. And we got eight bids. And as Bill mentioned, the base bid for this was about $10,000 cheaper from than last year. So that's, that's good news for the village. So this project was divided into two bid components. One was the base bid and the second was the bid alternate. The base bid is what we had been talking about, which is resurfacing of the parking lot to a depth of five inches. That base bid did not include any amenities, curb, lighting, bollards, et cetera. It only included the removal of what I sometimes refer to as the telephone bollards. Conversely, the alternate bid was the same five inch resurface of the parking lot. And it reconfigured the parking lot to improve some maneuverability. The alternate also included the amenities, the curb, the lighting, the bollards, the conduit for the future electric car charging stations and new landscaping. The, just as a point of of data here, the existing parking lot included 143 parking spaces. That was 135 regular spaces and 588 accessible spaces. The base bid, which was the resurfacing of the parking lot only and restriping it, we were able to add two parking spots, just research, restriping the parking lot to correct for a couple inefficiencies. The alternate, which is the reconfiguration of the lot, included 24 new parking spaces. So the numbers that we got, the low bid for the base, the five inch resurfacing was $362,259, $257.39 from Geske and Sons. The Village of Long Grove is familiar with Geske and Sons. They've done at least two of the last six years road programs. The the bid alternate is where it got a little bit interesting. We got a little bit of $610,000. And also the bid from Geske, as read, was about $640,000. The bid documents include a provision that states that for lack, for summary sake, you know, we can correct math errors, which Geske and Sons had a math error and they actually also computed an incorrect quantity. So the bid documents allow that to be revised. If you recall prior, previous projects, we read the bids and then we tabulate the bids. That's the purpose of tabulating the bids, just to make sure there's no math errors so that way the client, in this case, Long Grove, gets the the best project for the dollar amount that the contractor is actually intending to construct it for. Anyway, correcting that mistake from Geske and Sons puts their bid at $602,715.60 for the alternate. So that would be the low bid. And as I mentioned, the alternate bid is the full parking lot. It includes the resurfacing and all of the amenities, so $602,715.60. So I want to take just a a minute to walk through a few of the amenities. Total for each of these is written on the bid recommendation or the bid tabulation summary form that's in the board packet. But I just want to run through them. So you start with the five inch parking lot resurfacing, $362,000 and some change, which is the base bid. From that, the village can elect to add the conduit for the future electric vehicle charging stations, Can add on top of that, the decorative illuminated entrance bollards, a total of 10 of those, Adding on to that, from just resurfacing the parking lot, could add concrete islands. There's a total of four of them within the parking lot and also curb along the, I will refer to that as the creek side of the parking lot, curb being added there for drainage purposes. That's $64,378.55. Now, that does include the removal of of the the existing islands. And then I'm going to skip the next one for now. I'll come back to it. But then the other item to add on to the base project is the lighting improvements, Adding the base and those four amenities gets you to $608,490.94. As the footnote in the bid summary notes, that there's some overlap between a couple of the amenities with trying to break those out. So it's not exactly the the low bid of from Geske and Sons, $602,000. However, it's it's within, you know, 1% at 608,000. I skipped over the the fourth bullet point. And President Jacob brought this up a couple of weeks ago, or actually a month ago, when we were talking about bidding this project. What happens when, if you just What happens when, if you just remove the existing landscape islands with the, uh, the timbers around them and pave those over with asphalt? The big benefit of that is removing that and restriping the parking lot. You can add 44 parking spaces over what the, is currently in the lot. Just to recap.
Did I hear the right 44?
Forty-four, four-four.
Wow.
If you're a San Francisco 49er fan, Tom Rathman's jersey number. So, um, so that's, that's the big benefit of that. The cost to do that would be 37,416.60. Again, that includes removing all of the existing landscape tippers, the, or the material, the, the trees and, uh, building that up with, uh, pavement. So there, there's, there's a few different options here. Starts with the base at the 362,000 and then adding on from there. Uh, Bill Balling did, uh, reference the DCEO grant. I was able to get an update on the grant status this afternoon. And the village has accepted the award and now the grant agreement has been processed by the state and it's under the final legal review. So once it passes that, it will be forwarded over to the state. Our grant coordinator anticipates that will happen here in the coming weeks. So, uh, it's, uh, it's right there. So, uh, I've done a lot of talking. There's a lot of numbers here. I think, uh, at this point, um, if you don't mind, uh, President Bill will, uh, go through it, dissect it and, uh, have some discussion.
Yeah. So who wants to begin, I guess, right?
Could I, could I just get a basic, how many spaces with the, the basic bid and then add the 44? What, what's the basic number of?
Okay, right now you've got 143 spots and adding the, uh, removing the islands and putting the 44 in there, 187.
Okay, okay.
So wait, it's a total of 187 with the 44?
Yeah.
Correct.
That's a huge capacity increase. That's a lot.
I'll speak first. I'll say, you know, I'm definitely in favor of making lighting improvements, getting ourselves set up for charging and maximizing the spots. That's a very busy lot. Even Archer is getting really busy these days. I think that would be, um, my, that would be my inclination. And I do think the lighting is needed. I think it's dangerous. It looks certainly more dangerous right now, but.
Thank you, Anne. Anybody else?
I'm wondering if, what do the bollards look like, Jeff? The, um, entrance bollards? Do we have that anywhere?
Yeah, I've got a, an image of that. And, uh, President Bill, would I be able to share my screen or not?
Yeah, go ahead. So let me, uh, let's see, share. Do I need to give you, uh, make a co-host, I think, right? Go ahead. Try to share.
All right. So there's a lot of options for decorative bollards. I, uh, we're certainly not going to use anything in blue. Uh, let me back up. The, the lighting improvements, uh, that we talked about, we're going to patch the arch parking lot, which is, which is black, Lumeck decorative poles, LED light fixtures. Uh, this is a, a product that, that, for a decorative bollard, also supplied by Lumeck, uh, LED and more for ambient lighting, not, uh, any safety lighting or anything like that. But, uh, this is, uh, one of their more, uh, ornamental and decorative products.
How tall is that, Jeff?
Uh, it is, uh, uh, three and a half feet if I remember correctly.
And so what do you do about snowplows? Where, where are they located?
So we put those off of the edge of the road, their edge of the driveline. You know, I can't, uh, speak to the snowplow operators, but I do know that, uh, they have, they do have their challenges in the big snow events, both, uh, intensity and accumulation.
Is there any overhead lighting that, that is gonna be installed?
We didn't include any overhead lighting on the entrances. Uh, village ordinance was a, a zero cutoff at, at property lines. And, you know, there's no property lines along the entrances. You know, most of those are on easements. Uh, so we didn't wanna introduce lighting and spillage, uh, onto those businesses and properties.
Sure. I would, I was just wondering for safety purposes, it, you know, even just walking from, from the car to one of the restaurants or, you know, anywhere around the parking lot, we don't have, we don't have anything there now though, right?
Well, that was the issue from the bollard that we're thinking of because the, the entrance to the, to the parking lot is shared by the vehicle and the pedestrian.
Yes.
Well, how do we compromise to make that illuminated without making that look like it's an intrusive lighting system?
Right.
And this bollard seemed to have a lot of merit. So that, there was a pedestrian safety argument we looked at as well as, uh, definition of the driveway itself.
Right. There was, could, the, um, can you go back to the? I can pull it up actually.
You have the diagram of, uh?
No, well, the, the list.
Oh, the list, okay.
Yeah, it was the, the, um,
I can share my screen if you want.
Yeah. The,
This is what you're looking at?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can you see it? Okay?
I can, thanks. Um, so it, the, the conduit for the car, for the charging stations would accommodate, how many cars do you figure?
Uh, we figured that, okay, so it'll take, um, conduit to two locations for charging stations. Uh, and we're anticipating it's sized for at least the eight, uh, vehicles.
Okay, so, um, so if you, if you don't have an electric car, where we, in essence, and not that we're losing parking spaces, but a non-electric car couldn't park in those, shouldn't park in those spaces. So it would give us 179 spaces for everybody to use. Eight of them would just be electric cars, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. And the, the other question I had was the curbing. You're thinking that goes along the western edge over near the, the creek?
Yeah, uh, on the, uh, yeah, I referred to it, the creek side, the westerly side, and that's, that's for drainage purposes.
Right. Which seems like probably a pretty good idea, right?
Uh, I thought so. Hey Rita, um, just to, uh, go back to the bollard just real quick, you know, that was, what was included? We did, we did, uh, include a provision that the final selection would be subject to village approval.
Oh, yeah. No, I was just, I was concerned with how fragile they are, you know, intentionally or unintentionally. Does somebody, you know, drive over them, back up into them, get knocked over, you know? Do we encase them in concrete? Do we, you know, what do we do to protect them if anything? Cause I, I think the lighting is like super important, especially if somebody's like, a, a person with a disability and they're, they have a walker or a wheelchair, baby carriages, things like that. So. So do you, do you need us to, uh, agree or disagree on the additions or tonight?
We're, we're suggesting that you authorize the entire amount, but that we, of all of the, uh, amenity packages that Jeff has listed here, that we send those out through basically tax order author, uh, order authorization. So we'll have the money in place to do it, but not the direction to proceed without, you know, we, we can take, we have some time to deal with the, the final authorization, the final issues and what we want. Uh, if we don't take, for instance, the lighting improvements, we could, we just wouldn't spend 139K of the project that we had. So we're thinking that's the cleanest way to do it and still give the board some time to think and reflect on what would be the best fit for things that, you know, obviously if you wanted everything improved tonight, we'd make it happen. But, uh, we're thinking that let's get the maximum authorization in and let's have, uh, uh, the, the other tasks, which will be coming forward to the board for authorization when they get ready to do it.
Yeah, so this is like an, an additional 300,000. So we're looking at approximately 700,000 for, for the parking lot. Correct?
608. 608, he said.
Six oh, six oh eight, I think is the low, the low bid. Once Jeff made the corrections, I think was, uh, was, was everything.
So, uh, 608 was how to kind of break out all the amenities, but some of that is double counted. So the total would be 602,715, uh, 60.
See, oh, and that, that includes everything is to the.
Correct.
Would be extra parking?
How do we read these concrete islands versus removed landscape? Are those mutually exclusive?
So, um,
64,000 and the 37,000?
So, uh, there is a little, there, there is a little bit of overlap. Um, for example, there is, um, you know, more than, probably a little more than half a dozen existing landscape timber islands. Whereas the new, uh, alternate bid had only four islands in it, uh, at the, um, I would say the four corners of the lot, but, uh, the lot's kind of diagonal, so it's not, so corners might not be the right word, but four.
What's the benefit of the islands?
The benefit of the islands, uh, is, uh, I guess two things immediately come to my mind. Uh, one, uh, gives drivers, um, more definition of where to go. And the other thing is those islands, they could provide, um, some decorative landscaping, uh, kind of break up, uh, the proverbial sea of asphalt is, uh, is referred to in my profession.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it, but I just read the comprehensive plan cover to cover and there says in here that we need to have plantings in our parking lots. I wish I had it. I could find it, but it does say that that is something that is, um, uh, desired in the comprehensive plan.
Uh, you know, Jenny, it, it's, it's interesting bringing that up and, uh, Jim Hoag may be able to, uh, speak to this a little bit more. Um, I remember years ago, the village code, uh, included landscaped islands in parking lots, like landscape island every 20 spaces, uh, something like that. Um, but it, uh, was revised and that's no longer in the village code.
Oh, I, maybe I have, this is 2018 and I saw.
So, no, it's, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of documents and I, I just bring it up for discussion. Um, you know, I, I, I like the, uh, landscaped islands, the, similar to the bollards, they do, uh, get hit by snowplows though.
Do we have islands? Did Archer?
Uh, we do.
Yeah, we've got landscape, yeah, we've got the whole landscaped islands that are curved in Archer. I think some of it's detention.
Right, yeah, that's right. I couldn't figure it. It's funny.
There's a lot of plant material on Archer.
Okay.
Jim, you trying to say something?
Um, part of the, the landscape features in Archer are actually bioswales that help to purify the water that ultimately goes into the ponds that are part of, um,
Three Lakes?
I think it is, subdivision to the east. Um, so that was all incorporated into, um, design of, of the Archer lot and, and actually we won an award for that one.
Um, Chris, you've been quiet. Can I just call upon you to say something?
Thank you, Bill. Um, yeah, it's interesting. Um, you know, we go from, let's make the parking lot safe to paving a bigger piece of parking lot to this proposal, um, with all the quote amenities. It just seems like it's a pretty big, big, uh, jump from where we started in this initial project. I think it's also a very quite expensive jump. Um, you know, lighting improvements. You know, if we're going to go ahead and spend this kind of money, let's think about alternatives like solar lighting or solar panels or, you know, what we're trying to impose up in the school with, uh, solar panels over the parking structures to help pay for some of this. And, um, the other thing that I contemplated is the electric charging stations, you know, I think we, well, two things actually. Electric charging stations, um, okay, but, you know, we've got to figure out a way to make people pay for that. And the other question I really have for Vic and I really don't know is can we charge parking fees in our own parking lot or are we not able to do that? Because now, I mean, we gotta come up with better per $700,000 to pay for this. We're not even done putting stations in yet or, or other things, so. I just think it's a big jump.
Let me address the, can we charge? The, the answer is yes, we can. There are two issues, uh, regarding Stempel that make it a little complicated. One is the multiple ownership and our ability to, uh, charge for those areas that are, uh, not owned with the underlying fee of the village. So that will create some, you know, if we, if we, if we need our spaces and the others are not, it will create some, uh, odd parking habits. And, and then the other issue is really a policy issue for the board and that is, uh, some will argue that to impose a parking require or a, a parking meter requirement may be a discouragement from coming to downtown Long Grove as opposed to going to various shopping malls because parking is usually free there. And that is the, uh, the, the policy question you all have to struggle with. But I think that that's an issue that often comes up. Uh, the, I guess the counterbalance on this is that ideally, um, to improve the parking enhances the opportunity for people to come and increases the, the shopping, increases the sales tax. So we get it paid for indirectly. Uh, do I have any historical evidence?
What's your, what's your projection on when that tax revenue will pay for $700,000?
I make no projections, whatever.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying.
Is it 602,000? I just wanna make clear.
Sorry, I'll be clear. Yeah, it's 608, I thought, but sorry.
I just wanna be clear, so.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Yeah, so I, I'm all, I'm all for making it safe and making it attractive. I think Jenny was hinting around, we'd like to have some planters and flowers back in there. I would personally like to see that. You know, I just think the blacktop slab is not what Long Grove's all about.
One of my questions is, so we had to do this mitigation in the other, the Archer for the, the, the ponds. What about the creek that runs very much close to this parking lot? Do we need to account for that with salt being thrown on that? And, um, it's just, what, well, how is the, the pond issue different from the creek issue?
So the, uh, there's one, one big difference. Um, the Archer lot and conveyance of the rainwater into the ponds is all by storm sewer. So the challenge that the village faced when the Archer parking lot was getting built was how do you filter the storm water before it gets into the pipe? And the, the Stempel lot is all direct runoff and there's still a good buffer strip, uh, onto, on the creek side of the parking lot. And, uh, going back to the drainage comment for the curb, you know, we want to focus the, the drainage into five locations to drain to the creek. And, you know, line those with rip rap to two things. One, slow down the water, uh, to let, um, sediments filter out, um, and also slow it down to prevent, uh, you know, erosion going into the creek.
But what about salt?
So the, so the salt, um, it's, it's a combination of two things. One sensible salting, but then also, um, you know, it's that, uh, that same strip there.
Let me, let me ask him just a follow-up question. So, you know, maybe, you know, maybe, um, you know, we don't do, uh, take out all the planters, maybe put a few in there. But in, in the grand scheme of things, does it make a big difference if it's, um, you know, 140 spaces versus 184 from a salting perspective or, um, or is it gonna be the same runoff salt issue? I mean, it, it, it may beg the question of coming up with a different de-icing scheme. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, if there's more pavement, there's more salty incremental difference between 140 and 180 spaces.
31%.
Correct. Not, not a lot of salt, um, runoff, you know, they're putting it down after. Correct. Not, not a lot of salt, um, runoff, you know, they're putting it down after a snow event, the footprint of the lot is pretty much the same. Uh, just going back, the, the alternate bid, which had those four concrete islands that in, in increase the parking by a hundred, by twenty-four spaces. So, um, with that, you're going from a hundred and forty-three to a hundred and sixty-seven. So you just don't get the, those last twenty.
Are there options to explore at this point per Chris's? Talk about, can we, uh, explore different lighting? I understand you basically had a bid that it matches Archer. Um, but are there opportunities to explore, um, I guess more environmentally friendly lighting?
Uh, I think certainly there is. And as, uh, Bill Bolling, um, uh, was outlining, if we approve the, the whole, uh, base bit or the alternate bit, excuse me, for the six oh two, that's not approving any of the amenities. So that gives us some, some time to explore those options.
How would that work though? So we approve it tonight and, um, you know, it, it, it sets the thing in motion, but how does that work as far as, you know, who's going to make the decision or is it going to come back to the board for decisions on the lighting and all those, you know, key things? How's that going to work?
Well, we'd have to be efficient in terms of our decision making and, you know, we don't use the vehicle of workshops very often in Long Grove, but that would be like a subject of what's your final. So would, you know, the, the, the work we're talking about a subcontractor work, but that doesn't mean it's late in the project work because some of those conduits and everything you have to go in pretty quickly. So it just, what, what we, we know is available to the board is a pause at this point. We don't have the funding, uh, absolutely secured at this point. We can't start the construction. We can authorize the contract. Um, but, uh, this gives an opportunity for the, the board to kind of evaluate what's the most important and then come back. I, I mean, I wouldn't want this to drag on, uh, more than a month. Um, and, 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 you know, one or two meetings maximum to have some discussion, some inquiry. Um, you know, Jeff stands ready to answer the technical questions on things that we need. But, uh, I mean, you're giving us pretty good direction right now in terms of, you know, trying to squeeze out as much parking as you can, but there's some, you know, so there's some reason to think that there's support for some landscaping and, uh, um, so putting that together in one final package, doing so through a polling or additional discussion on the board is what I would anticipate happening, but I think we'd want final direction on that, um, uh, certainly by around August one. That would be a, Jeff, am I right on that? That'd be a good target. We're not going to disrupt the pace of construction.
Yeah, and, uh, I was, I was just going to add to that, that, um, you know, we approve the work now that, that locks in with, with Geski and Sons because another goal of the project is to get this done, uh, before winter time and that's, that's it. The other thing is, you know, there's going to be a little bit of time here before the work can start because the DCO funding. So even though the, the grant agreement is, is coming in the next couple of weeks, it still takes some time to get it, to review it from the villages side, and then after that send it back to DCO and ultimately get it approved. So I would imagine that pride, that process, uh, isn't going to be done for another six weeks. So August one, that's a good target.
Jeff, it were, are the entrances and exits, do they, those remain the same or does something become one way or does it go back to being one way on, I, I'm looking at the print, but it's, and, and does, I don't think it indicates anything.
You know, all of the, uh, the entrances remain the same. Um, that one goes in, um, and then all two, they come in to the go out.
Where's the fourth?
They're not always used that way.
Yeah, I was just, you're, you are totally right, uh, and, um, I have observed, matter of fact, I was over there in a weekend and there was a killed air police officer. I have no idea what he was doing, but he was going the wrong way. I had to wave him out of the parking lot so I could drive in by the chatterbox, right? And he's looking at me. I'm like, no, you gotta move. You're going the wrong way. So it's not clear. So that's something we got to figure out. Matter of fact, I was eating dinner at the chatterbox this weekend. And we noticed some, um, you know, Michael Oakham was over there too, and we were talking and we were noticing some cars trying to go the wrong way and they were almost playing chicken to get out. So that, you know, that's some stuff that's got to be sorted out. And the, all the other really scary thing was a little kid that ran across the street to Brothers Field from the ice cream place as we were pulling in. So, um, you know, whatever, you know, whatever we can do for safety as we, you know, when we've adjusted these things, we need to do that too. That was pretty scary when that little kid just ran across the street in front of me. So.
Yeah. And I would say that's the entrance I was speaking of too. I've had the same issue. I've had, as I enter, somebody else is like trying to leave and that's the one that's probably the most problematic.
Yeah, I think there's only one, one sign left from days gone by that says do not enter, but nobody pays any attention to it.
But that, I think. Was put up though, right, Jeff? Yeah.
Yeah, there was new signs put up, uh, the, uh, the one between, um, Michael Oakham's new property and the, the Creamery, uh, do not enter. And I know that the, there's do not inter side, inter signs on the parking lot side of the two, uh, entrances that, uh, go the other way. Uh, and the township was going to replace those earlier this year, but they weren't able to do it because that was in the heat of the snow. Uh, with everything that was going on over there, I do not believe they, uh, they got to that yet.
Yeah. Thanks.
I knew those are worn and, uh, somewhat illegible.
Well, I'm going to make a suggestion too, that you, you know, if we approve this tonight, you still need to involve, um, all of the, you know, business owners too. And I'll use Bobby's, you know, um, open house or workshop type format like we did for Kruger. You, you need to do that too, because they're going to have some thoughts as well. So Bobby's being quiet too.
So there's, there's no doubt the, the lot needs to be replaced period and store. The, uh, the only thing we have in front of us that we need to work out is any of these amenities or all of them. Some of, some of them are all of them, right?
Right. Hey Bobby, you've been quiet.
You really don't want to hear what I want, what I, what I think.
Uh-oh. Well, I do actually then if you're.
No, I, I'll keep my own counsel. Thank you.
Oh boy, okay.
We're two from here.
Well, I guess, I mean, the question is, does the board feel comfortable tonight or do you want to wait another meeting to make some kind of a decision either on the base bed or, um, uh, the total package with, uh, an agreement that they'll be, um, uh, we'll work out the, the, the details later so we could signal to a particular contractor that we want to get this done and get it, get it going, right? So though I think that's really where we're at.
When, when, so when we spend this money, let, and let's just, just let's talk about the amenities and, you know, lighting, lighting is a gotta, we, we can't have a parking lot without lighting, right? So that's a given. I would suspicion. Um, do we know, do we have any idea of what wouldn't get done because we are, are spending this money on this project? What do we, what do we have to give up in order to, um?
Oh, I mean, in our budget, you're thinking?
Yeah, in order to pay for this, what do we?
We're running a surplus and Ann might be the best one at that one.
We're running a surplus on that. Basically we give up our buffer. Um, let me, let me take a look here. Uh, where we are down to that. Oh, I've got, this is the general. It'd probably be in the infrastructure. Um, give me a second, but basically if you recall, we had a surplus in both the general fund and in the capital fund. Um, and that was purposeful. Again, some additional uncertainty on some of this. All right. I, this is two hundred and forty thousand over the low bid. You know, if we, the base bid is like, we've got to pave this. I agree with you. I think we have to do some level of lighting improvements. They're really awful right now and not effective. Um, do we have to do a hundred and thirty-nine? I don't know. Um, so we're looking at two hundred and forty thousand. If I recall, that's about, it, we give up our surplus on there.
Jeff, do you remember your, uh, your, uh, CIP estimate or what, what are your engineer's estimate when we put out the bid?
Well, we were working off the bids that we got last year. It was three seventy-three, uh, and then we, for the, the budget, we included, uh, ten percent fringe, uh, a contingency and four and a half percent for engineering for four hundred, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, if I remember right, just under four thirty.
Okay.
Look it up real quick.
And that didn't have any of the amenity packages in it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So our capital fund, I think when we discussed in April, the surplus was two hundred and seventy-one thousand. Part of that was due to the recent, um, the North Kruger bid coming in a lot lower than we thought. So basically it eats up that surplus. It, it gets, it's in the, uh, capital fund.
Well, and we are, are we saying that we are paying a hundred percent of this?
Well, we're getting the grant.
Well, my, yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Minus the grant. It's our, it's, are we saying this is our tab?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, we had budgeted four hundred and thirty um, in the capital product. So basically bringing this up to six oh eight, um, is actually not, it's not two hundred, it does need up all the surplus. We had budgeted four thirty.
I'm, I'm not sure I, I understand why removing the existing islands and landscape timber. I mean, don't you have to, isn't that part of putting in the paving? Is, is it just that that wasn't in the bid that we put out? Is that why it's here as an amenity?
Yeah, just the base was removing what asphalt was there and putting in asphalt where asphalt was.
I see. Okay.
And, and Jeff, you said pulling trees out as well?
Yeah, that, uh,
Man, I'm just trying to think of what kind of trees are in there. Is there anything valuable that we would, we have protected in there?
There's one tree that is somewhat salv, like that I would say might be worth saving, but for the most part they're half dead anyway.
It's like parking lot landscaping.
Yeah, it's probably, parking lots are probably not suitable places for trees anywhere.
I don't want to push this tonight. We're getting pretty late on the, uh, agenda time wise. So, um, if you're not comfortable, we can, you know, move it to the next meeting. We have time. So whatever you want to do.
I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay approving the Geski bid. Um, I, I don't know that there's any, you know, what, what do you eliminate from the amenities really? Um, I, I agree with Chris. It's, it's a chunk of change. Um, but it's got to be done, it's got to be done. So I can go either way.
I agree with Rita on that. And I, and I also think Chris is a, a good point on, uh, you know, could we go sharpen the pencil and do something on lighting that might be more environmentally responsible and in keeping, um, not that it's irresponsible. I'm just saying, could we do better?
And maybe we should, you know, maybe that's a should issue, you know, um, may, maybe we should do something that's more in, environmentally, um, favorable. Um, and, and as far as the salt goes, is, is there a workaround on that, Jeff, as to what kind of uh, such substance is used in the winter just because that is so close to the creek?
That's not part of this decision. Sorry to interrupt, but that's a different.
Oh, I, I know, but I mean, Jen, Jenny raised that and it, it makes a lot of sense. The, the parking lot now isn't, it, it isn't, it's got, it's like a sieve because there's, it's in such crummy condition. A new parking lot is going to be a super impervious surface with probably, I'm, I'm thinking more runoff than what we currently have just because the current parking lot is a sieve.
Well, the only thing I can think of is beet juice, but, uh, you know.
Yeah, what happened to that? That doesn't, is that not effective?
No, some people are still using it. It's more expensive. That's the issue.
Oh, I see. Of course, of course. But, uh, you know, maybe there is something we could do as far as solar power, but I'm still, that's, it's not, that's not going to eliminate the expense of providing lighting. So probably six, one half dozen of another.
Jeff, that's an LED system, isn't it?
Yeah, it's LED. Yep.
So that's a pretty good, that's pretty good efficiency right there that, that, uh, compared to, you know, alternates.
Is this like the traffic light where the snow is, you're going to build up and?
Well, it is. I mean, that's one of the nemesis of, and traffic signals are more critical, but, uh, in, although I, the fixture itself, I don't think it's going to land. Well, you tell me, Jeff, are we going to have a snow buildup?
Well, uh, the, the lighting fixtures are more, you know, they're not the, the old Cobra head, but they're, they're, they, they're, they shine down. They've got a metal top on them. So.
So you're not going to have a.
Snow hits the top of the, but then also it's a flat lens on the bottom. So you don't get, uh, snow that's blowing on them either. So that's greatly reduced with these ones.
Yeah.
All right, it's eight, it's eight thirty everyone. So do you want to, um, make a decision tonight or do you want to, um, kick the can? If somebody wants to make a decision, I'd look for, um, a motion.
Hey Jeff, does it have to be blacktop?
Have to be, um,
Like, like something that's more.
But I think, I think, uh, you know, village code allows, you know, the blacktop, the concrete, um, permeable pavers probably as well. I don't think village code allows gravel.
Now I was thinking about like the perme, per, pervious pavers, like you see in some of the Asian countries where they'll do the, the parking lot with, you know, the half, kind of the half brick with grass growing up between them, that kind of thing. I don't, I don't know what the right word for that is. I'll.
Yeah, permeable pavers. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they have something like that at the Morton Arboretum. Um, we kind of have to mow the parking lot.
Cost wise, does that do us any?
Like a grasscrete or?
I think it's more expensive, Chris.
It's, it's a lot more, it's a lot more expensive. If you want to do it on the cheap, you can just have the grasscrete, but then it's going to get hard and it's going to be as, it's going to be very much like pervious. If you want to do it right, you have to have a much more sophisticated underground, uh, drainage system to draw the water off that comes through the, the, the pavers.
Thank you, Attorney Philippini. Why?
I, I only, I only know because I've had it did on several different projects in different communities. The numbers always come out a lot higher. I'm sure Jeff has much more sophisticated analysis than that, but.
No, you're on point, Vic. Uh, we do a permeable paver that's, uh, putting in a storm sewer system.
Yeah, and the, the, I noticed at the arboretum that the maintenance on those is, um, major. Unfortunately, you know, unfortunately.
So, so again.
I'll make the motion. I will move, I will move that we accept the low bid from Geski with the full amenities and the discretion. And it can die in the vine, but I'll make the motion to go.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee O'Connor.
I am settled by the way. I can take this.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Veraskey?
No, no.
No, okay. Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Yes.
Trustee O'Reilly?
No.
No. Uh, trustee O'Connor?
No.
No. And, uh, last but not least, trustee Micho?
Uh, no.
Okay. Now, let me, uh, point something out. This was a bidding process. We've now had a final vote on the bids that was negative. Uh, technically, uh, this is now dead. And if we wanted to rethink any kind of bids for simple, we're going to have to rebid. Uh, in order to, that, I'm just, I'm pointing out what we need to do in order to at least keep this alive for consideration on another date. Either Chris, Bobby, Rita or Jenny has to file or has to make a motion to reconsider so that this can be maintained on the village board's agenda without having to rebid. And that motion will have to be seconded and approved. Otherwise, if we want to go back, we're either going to have to waive competitive bidding or we're going to have to rebid.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Okay, so that, that was, uh, moved by, uh, trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Micho.
We'll need a roll call.
Yep, trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Hey.
And trustee Borowski?
Hi.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep us moving, obviously we need more conversation there, motion carried, and thank you. The, the next item on the agenda is one that I hope is a hundred percent unanimous. We, I'm happy to announce that we have a village manager that has signed an agreement with us. And, uh, his name is Gregory Jackson, and he's very excited about coming to Long Grove. Is there any discussion, or does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by trustee Micho, seconded by trustee O'Connor, that's a roll call.
Trustee Borowski?
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
And trustee Micho?
Hi.
All right, motion carried, we're, that's decided, I don't, I don't know if Greg's here tonight, is he here tonight?
Don't see him on the call.
Okay, no, he's not, all right, I knew he was gonna try to join, so, uh, well, great news, I'm, I'm excited about that, and thank you, everyone. For approving this tonight, this is great news, so. All right, moving us along, I know we have a, a resident here tonight that has an issue with their sprinkler system. It's the Chung property located fifty eight twelve Pin Tail, I don't know if if village manager Balling, intermanager Balling wants to give the, the little history on this one?
Yeah, this is, it's sort of an unusual situation, is that the property was originally built under the fire sprinkling code that exists in the village of Long Grove. The property owner undertook a remodeling of kitchen and bath. And when the walls were taken down, it was observed that the system was deficient and not functional, which put us in an awkward position. We discussed that with the property owner, and he is here tonight to appeal the decision of the, it's, of the code official, if you will. To introduce a mitigation plan that would have the, the walls that are open would be repurposed and rebuilt to a higher standard in terms of hourly rating on fire, and the second mitigation recommendation that Joshua's making is that we, he would have an automated system of, of a fire alarm system, a third party fire alarm system. And, um, uh, the staff has looked at that and believe it's a reasonable mitigation plan. We've run it past the Long Grove Fire Protection District of, of Fire Prevention Officer, who also believes, and he's been involved in this decision making, so it's a, it's an unusual situation that we don't usually see. It's something that, uh, in the course of the reconstruction was identified, and we think the the mitigation plan is reasonable, and I know that, I don't see his name right here, but Josh was on the.
He's here, I'm on, he's on.
There he is, yeah, Josh, if you wanted to add anything on your appeal to the board, it would be discussed and deliberated, and if the board adopts the mitigation plan, then we can move back into the completion of the project as recommended.
Sure, thank you, thank you for your time, so we did, uh, start our renovation back in March. And as soon as we tore down the walls, we noticed that the, the sprinkler system, especially the pipes, were in poor shape. We have hired a company called DND Fire Protection out of Glenview. They came out, took a look at everything, and then just said, we cannot work on this because the pipes that you guys are using is from the, was stopped being used in nineteen eighties, and there are no longer way to mitigate that or couple that with the pipes that are being used right now. After that, with the recommendation of the Long Grove Village Fire Department, we've used, we've hired Nova Fire Protection from Schaumburg, and they've really tried for a good month. We've halted all of our construction from basically April through now, so I have no kitchen and no bathrooms. And they have gone through, contacted as many manufacturers as they could looking for a coupler that would couple the existing pipe system to the pipes that are available in the market at this point, and at the end of the day, they could not find anything that they felt that they could warranty afterwards. So we've had a, a couple meetings with Nova Fire Protection System, as well as Jason and John from a Long Grove Village Fire Protection Department, and they've decided that, hey, this system cannot be salvaged, therefore, they made a couple recommendations that Bill just mentioned. And, um, I'm here now appealing to you guys. We haven't had a kitchen or, you know, working bathrooms in the last few months, and we would really love to continue on constructing, and we're do, we've, we believe that we've done our due diligence in hiring two different companies, spending thousands of dollars, having them research a way to salvage the system, which they both gave up on, and we are taking the recommendation from the fire department to use a essentially higher fire rated drywall material than what's available. And also, we already do have, and will continually keep the fire alarm system that will automatically call the fire department in case of a fire.
I have one question I wanted to ask you, there, in the Nova recommendation, there was a, they said that they would put, or that you should put a a small, like new set of pipes in the basement over the furnace and the stairs. Is that something, is that part of your mitigation plan?
At this moment, it's not.
Okay. That there might be some way to do that, because in the basement, that would be low cost, that they could, you could add a pipe there.
Okay, uh, fire department did not ask me to do that, but that's something that I can talk to them about.
Okay.
Is, is it your understanding that the previous owners never used the system?
As far as I understand, yes, and also there were some rumors, at least I was told by the sellers. Turn, or not attorney, I'm sorry, the real estate agent, that because we have converted over to the city water, that the fire sprinkler system was no longer required, which obviously is not true. But I believe that that's a running rumor amongst the, our our little subdivision, yes, Heron's Landing, so I've talked to the Heron's Landing Homeowners Association president about that, and he had actually sent out an email to everybody saying, hey, it is required, and you need to keep it updated. But as far as I understand, the previous owner did not keep it maintained.
I, I think you're, you're probably one of many who have the systems and have turned them off and or never used them, never maintained them. Which, of course, is contrary to what they're built for, but unfortunately, you inherited one, and I, I can't see that there's any percentage in forcing you to do something that you can't do, so it doesn't make sense.
Do we need a motion to grant the waiver?
Yeah, I think, I don't, I think it's not a resolution, it's just a motion to grant the waiver by the board, right?
I would so move.
Okay, move by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee.
If, if I might ask that we make the motion subject to the appropriate documentation, because one of the elements of this is the maintenance of the third party alarm, and that's something that we, uh, we need to make sure is properly documented. So it's covered, uh, for this property and if, uh, this property owner, and if he were to sell to any subsequent owner.
What he said.
Second what he said.
Okay, so it was moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Micho. That's a roll call.
Trustee Micho?
I just want to apologize to you for the delay in this, and thank you for giving your due diligence, I really appreciate it, and I wish you luck with the next stage of your project.
Thank you.
And, uh, yes, definitely.
Thank you, trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Hi.
And trustee Borowski?
Yes, of course.
All right, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Good luck to you, hope you get to go to the bathroom soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, all right, um, I don't think we can do anything with the other one, the next item on the agenda tonight, which is a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between the village of Long Grove and Eila Township, and that's because they changed the agreement again last night, unless um, and, and, you know, we got something right before this board meeting that, that, you know, Vic had hit my mail slot, I didn't have a chance to it's like an hour before the meeting, do anything with it, so.
I, I didn't sense that there was any urgency to act on it tonight, and there's some discrepancies between the, the versions that that is before the board and what the township sent over, so I think it's probably best to try to work those out and have them on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, it was six fifty four last night, and I looked at my email, I'm like, this, this is another version of the contract from Eila, so I, I flipped it over to you, and yeah, it's, 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 it was, it was a different version, so, uh, thanks, Vic, so we're gonna defer that one if everyone's okay.
Sir, are you concerned about their good faith work here?
No.
I, I don't think it's that, I think it's, um, the township president has been trying to freelance this document, and, uh, there's just some conundrums in it that we're trying to resolve.
We have had a great and very consistent relationship with Eila, that they're, they're our public works department, and they're very responsive operationally. So I think this is probably the leadership shift that has caused that more than a desire to trick us or something, but, uh, because the
Yeah, no, that, that's kind of what I meant, Phil, I didn't mean to cast any shade on them, so.
I, I did have a question, though, the, the hourly rate that they were quoting us would just kind of caught my eye, and I wasn't you know, probably just because I don't know, but they were also quoting us like overtime, um, I, I get holidays and weekends, I get that, but like you know, if we contract with them for more than forty hours a week, we get hit with overtime, we're not like hiring one employee, are we? I mean, why would we be paying overtime for that function if we're just contracting an hourly rate?
I wanted to confirm that with Vic, because I, I, I think it's not gonna be applicable, because we don't have that type of commit we have a commitment to plug in service requests and get them completed. There are, there are some occasions when we have to pay overtime, such as if we have a festival and we have to get the closed streets reopen, we rely on them to come in, we try to time that all during the workday, even at the expense of keeping us, a street closed after an event, but that would be one instance where we would have it. If we had a sign down, a critical sign down, a stop sign or something like that, we would call them out, and we would pay the individual of the crew, the costs at their overtime rate to, to, to do that. But there, there's not too many circumstances where we'd have a, a running forty hour for one individual person. And it was, that was a little bit unclear to me as well, how that would work, as we, there are, there are times we pay overtime to the individual when they go over their their schedule, and, uh, but that's warranted, and what I'd call emergency or priority service that was identified.
I'm still not sure exactly how it's quote warranted, I mean, if we're contracting a laborly, an hourly rate, and they work on their projects for seven and a half hours, and then work on our projects for two hours, we get hit with the overtime rate for that?
Yes, yeah, because if I call them back like at seven o'clock at night to do something, let's say we had a situation where we had street light down or something like that, they, they have to, they have to pay the overtime rate, and they've passed that along to us, and well, it's not a frequent occurrence, I don't think it's unfair on the operating contract aspect, because they, they end up paying that out, and you know, we view the importance of the service and the access to the department in our situation pretty highly.
I, I think, Chris, your point is, is one that is among the issues that need to be reconciled, I think certainly, as Bill was suggesting, if the work is coming at a time which is outside of the regular work hours, that might be a justification for the overtime, but if somebody has just happened to be over their forty hour limit, and, and we're the last job on their ticket, so to speak, that should not be an issue overtime paid or charged to the village, so that's something I think needs clarification.
All right, thanks for looking at that, Vic, I appreciate it.
I'm gonna keep us moving if we can, um, if, if everyone's okay with that. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the sock monkey signage in the downtown, I mean, we all said we were good with it the last time, but we had to wait the, the, the waiting period in order to, in case, uh, you know, anyone objected to it, so.
To approve.
Motion to approve by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by
Second.
By trustee Micho, roll call.
Uh, trustee Borowski?
Yes.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Sure.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
And trustee Micho?
Hi.
All right, motion carried, thank you very much, I know they'll be happy to get that sign ordered. Moving on, uh, we've got the, um, the trustee and village president reports. The only thing I had, want to bring up to, to Bill is I got asked by somebody, uh, any movement on omens for the nursery, so we talked about it a lot at the last meeting, so that's the only question I have for you.
Yeah, the, the purpose of for that, and I, I hope to have the agreement in front of you next week, is the, the agreement, uh, uh, Mundeline is is concerned about taking them to adjudication court without an agreement, a property maintenance agreement. Uh, I actually, our, our prosecutor is their prosecutor, and I talked to Mr. LaLazanne last week. He says he's made that a priority to get that out to us, because we're, we're basically in a whole pattern now, because the enforcement authority that were writing, sending the adjudication court would be the village of Mundeline, and they said, we'll do it, but not before we have an agreement. So it's a proper step to take, and I'm hopeful that we'll have that, that agreement between Long Grove and Mundeline at our next meeting.
Is that also addressing the house?
No, no, because we don't have any sites on the house, Bobby, we have, we've been focusing on the, the abandoned industrial building or nursery building, if you will. The house and direction is a different thing, we don't, we don't customarily, if, if, if the issue is an occupancy issue, I, I, we probably have the authority to deal with those some issues, but we, that's something that I really need to review with Vic in terms of the proper procedures and what direction that we would have. And, and again, that may be something that we have to discuss, work through with Mundeline in terms of how they would do it.
Is it Mundeline, or is it the police, is it the sheriff?
Well, we think it's gonna be a property maintenance issue. But again, I get, there, there's a whole slew of other issues associated with, you know, enforcing on an occupied building that is much, that's different, so it'd be probably in two steps in any event, the, the priority we have right now is to work with the industrial building fencing and the, um, and the, um, the condition of the abandoned industrial building, nursery building, and then I haven't had a chance to talk at length with Vic on what, how, and what we put parameters on in terms of occupied housing enforcement, uh, that relates to things that get a little more complicated. But I, we, we can really do that and give you some, give you some feedback on that.
All right, thank you, Bill, I appreciate that. I did not make the EDC meeting this morning, I don't know if trustee Micho did.
I was there and I could hear it.
Oh, that's true.
So, the, the task of the EDC for this meeting was essentially, we went through all of the buildable areas and looked at the comprehensive plan and discussed what was listed in the comprehensive plan as recommendations. And through this, there seems to be a little bit of ex- exploration to the mid Lothian northernmost portion, because not, a lot of people had a lot of information about that. So it's gonna be a continuing conversation, but I thought it was good to go back and kind of realign the EDC with what our comprehensive plan says. And they're gonna look and see if there's any recommendations they might bring forward to the board that we might want to reconsider. There does seem to be a push to There does seem to be a push to consider high density housing in some of these areas. And that kind of harkens back to the presentation that was brought to the EDC for the South 15. And this probably isn't a conversation for tonight, but I, I. That is something that the EDC would, would like to kind of get the board's feedback if there's any sort of interest in pursuing that or if it's like just a definite no. And then the other thing that I thought was just kind of trying to make Long Grove an experience somewhat like old world Wisconsin, trying to, to encourage people to come here for experiences. So I guess that's pretty much the end of report.
Thank you, Jenny. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Do you want to schedule, it, does it make sense at some later date to schedule a workshop to kind of like talk through some of that? No action, but discussion?
I think that would be a great idea and I'm hoping that maybe the EDC, once we kind of hit these topics on the, the different developable parcels. We can kind of formulate what they're thinking and then maybe meet with the board and see, kind of take a temperature on what the board feels about that.
What do you guys maybe want to have a workshop?
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
A workshop. Wow. This year even, maybe even this year.
And even in person, maybe, so.
I, I propose we can do it around my bonfire, so, because it's nice and cool these days.
I'm not coming. You've got tips.
Okay, well, end of report.
Thank you. I'm just going to turn it over to anyone else. Does anyone else have a report to the?
I have one quick question.
Please.
As, as I mentioned previously, we now have a legacy page on the website. And we've got some, some people that are, have been put there and the question has come up. How, how far back do we want memorials? The suggestion has been to go back to some of the founders of Long Grove. It is, I, I, I don't have an absolute definition of what this legacy should be. But I, I think more in terms of 10 or 15 years, not 50 or 75 years.
I think it's a charming idea and I think it's a, it's a nice testament. But if we went back that far, I concernably, we spent all this energy looking backwards and all that, you know, that we could use looking forward.
Well, and nobody knows them.
Well, my question is who does all the work to put all together?
Well, we've got to smooth that out because right now Denise is doing too much.
Right, so we're, we're going to put this on ourselves and it's great to remember people and recognize people. But you, you know, we've got to have the time to do it, right? So if somebody came forward and they helped with that or they had something, you know, you could probably go back a little bit further, but to put it all on the. The village staff to go do all the.
I kind of want to see, get, get the kinks worked out and, and do with what's current. Well, that, you know, whoever's died in the last few years or whatever, but not, not going in and, and writing a history book.
Yeah, leave assets.
That makes sense to me. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. Okay. May I ask a quick question regarding communications?
Yeah, can you just? Hold it one, Christie, you were quiet. I just want to make sure you're, you're good.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
I mean, I think.
We're from everyone, that's all.
Yeah, I just don't think you want to get too unwieldy forever, right? I guess you never contemplated that part of it, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Rita.
We have several times mentioned the fact that we purchased that two-way communication system. We talked about it again while we were campaigning that gee, you know, we really need, it's really invigorating to hear what the residents think and. Have a two-way communication thing. Would it be possible for us to use that system? And the first use of it being sending out the survey to our residents, asking a top three reasons that they chose to live in Long Grove? Just to start the ball rolling, since we've got this social media campaign going on, it's all one-way communication. I would really, really like to have two-way communication.
Actually, at times it is two-way. I, in other words, in other words, like on Nextdoor, a question will be raised and, and we respond with an answer.
Right. I'm, I'm interested in this system where we ask our residents pointed questions and to start out friendly and, you know. It's, it starts a conversation. It draws people in and maybe we advance to the point where we, you know, question number five or six is. What are your, what are your thoughts on legalizing cannabis in the village? You know, I would like to know what, what the residents think and I'd like to make it as easy for them as possible.
I have a strong interest in using that polling software. I, you know, we don't want to get into the details, but you and I disagree, Rita, because you want lots of open-ended. And I think that easy as possible is lots of multiple choice. And that's coming from a marketing research background, but that, but I absolutely support and want to use that system also just to pull in data. Worst case, it's, it's, it's additional content that we can then, the purpose in social media saying, hey, 500 of you answered and said this.
Yeah, I, I'm super interested in anything residents have to let, want us to know.
But how about the 7,500 who aren't on social media participating in that survey? That's question number one. And then second question is, so if an issue comes up or a question is asked, how are the rest of us informed? That is a current discussion topic.
This is not social media. This is the polling software, Chris.
I understand, but we, I'm tying two questions together there because I think Bobby just said.
Would you ask him to keep his tail?
Sorry about that. So no, I guess I'm asking two questions, I guess. I get the social media part. I get the polling thing, but if you're not participating in the poll, how are we gaining? The non-participants' feelings, thoughts? And then in social media, Bobby just mentioned there was a question raised on Nextdoor. If you're not on Nextdoor. How do you know that there's a pending current topic being kicked around or discussed that we may want to share with everybody else?
Well, the, the purpose of the polling is it goes to every resident and I.
Those, those who are signed up, right?
No, 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 the, the, the benefit of the polling is they can guarantee us that it goes, A, only to our residents and to our residents. I don't know how they do it, but that was.
But that's if Chris Borowski signed up, right?
I, that's not understanding, no.
Or is that the phone or what is, how do we get to the residents?
It's email. If you don't have email, you don't get it.
Okay, so that's my point, right? So how do we reach the people who aren't connected to this network that we've got? How do we reach them or how do we get their data? Or more importantly, how do we communicate to them that there's a topic being discussed?
It would have to, it would have to at least be once or twice a year by mail, you know, to, and, and.
Or by the newsletter.
Yeah, and the newsletter. Well, but the newsletter is only known emails, right? Bridge.
No, 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 the, the newsletter, not the e-news, the newsletter.
I see. Yes, right.
Six times a year.
Right, the one that we mail. Yes.
Six times a year.
Yeah, I met a lady in Bill's neighborhood who has lived here for 13 years and she had no idea, none whatsoever, that we, we had. Resources that she was looking for. She said, how would I have known that? And I said, well, we would have needed your email. So.
Not true, not true.
Well.
Goes to every house, every house.
So, so, so let's, because we're running out of time here. We got a few more items on the agenda, so I, I think that, is it okay to ask the question that Rita asked? And it could be in the, we, we could try it in the printed bridge. We can try it in the, you know, a couple of different ways and see what we get back. Is everyone okay with that? Bobby, are you okay with that, since you lead communications?
Yeah.
Let's try it. Let's, Chris, would you be okay? We'll.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, to the point earlier that Bobby made, there's a discussion topic on Nextdoor and I'm sitting there going, eh, what is it? You know, I mean, if it's important.
That I even became aware of it, Chris.
I understand, but that's the point.
Because I don't, I don't get, get that either.
I get it, but if we're going to do this, it can't be a fluke that we're not getting it. We, we have to have a system in place that absolutely positively circles the wagon, closes the loop to make sure people are informed. We just can't assume that, that, you know, to Bill's, uh, Bill's earlier point, I sent you the Daily Herald link. If you don't subscribe to the Daily Herald, you can't open that link. It doesn't work. So, you know, to your point, you sent me the email article, but I can't open it because I'm not a Daily Herald subscriber. So, you know, that's what I'm, that's what point I'm trying to make. Yes, I'm good with that. Shut up. Let's move on.
Yep, no, so, so they have a communication meeting in the morning tomorrow. Bill and Bobby and so forth will hopefully talk about that tomorrow, so. Thank you.
I have some quick updates on finances.
Sure.
I'll try to go really fast. We have a pay warrant and I would recommend we do that. I, there isn't anything unusual. I did get a question on what some of the things are. If you recall, we still have a program in place that's a 50% rebate of, um, non-home rule 1% tax for businesses in the Tiff district that made improvements. Only two businesses actually did so, but they are continuing to, you know, get small amounts. So just so you know that that continues on. We also have some additional payments to the village accountant. They've not had a pay raise in many, many years. And since the accounting system, manager changes, process changes in COVID, they've had a lot of additional changes to and expansion of what they've been doing. So that's some of that in there. But we are now, should be caught up on the pay warrant. March financials, just want to let everybody know, the budget's back up to 93% coverage. With one month to go, revenues are over the full year budget, so we're sitting well. Income and sales tax way ahead, some revenues behind. Compensation is up, but related insurance is down. We have some things that are anomaly or we're seeing ups and downs in this year's budget that we have already addressed in next year's budget. And so I'm feeling pretty good on that. Denise and I had a conversation about some process changes and I understand she's got additional meetings scheduled next week that hopefully will make some of the pay warrant and other things going on there. In terms of next year budget, the actions in the accounting system, Denise and I are going to be working to get those allocated in months. Our goal is to have that, put it in a much better place so that we can hopefully project our actual cash flow position by month, which is not something we've ever done in the past. So we'd like to be able to look that and track that and then be able to start assessing, do we want a full year? Or if we've got better numbers throughout the, each month of understanding where our revenues and expenses are coming in, might we have some different approaches? Of others of note, last week Springfield, last week, was it June 1st? Last week Springfield, the local government distributed tax haircut that we had talked about during budgeting did not occur. So that's good news for us. Denise, I, I'll just give a quick, Denise is working with CROGAV. We've given them the stuff, they're in a quiet period and we'll be testing later on. And the last is, um, uh, some SSA bonds. The Route 83 water SSA bond, in fact, we could refinance that. The village financial planner had looked into that, a kind of back of envelope that looked like the savings might not be even up to 100,000. I mean, that's still real money. But it didn't seem to rise to the plan of we should put more on Bill Belling's plate while he's still interim manager. So I kind of said, you know what, that one, that one doesn't have to be a top priority. However, the Heron's Landing SSA bonds, those are callable December 15th. Um, they can be refinanced within 33 months of that, so it could be as early as September. Those have more savings potential. That's actually been presented to Heron's Landing. They'd like to proceed because that's their money, but, you know, that they're paying for that. And they'd also have an opportunity at that time, not to just refinance for better rates, but also potentially prepay, which was an option given 10 years ago. But as houses have turned over, they haven't had that opportunity. The estimate right now is a net savings of some 500,000 for all of those bonds, which would be, you know, real money on the order of 8,000 per resident. Given current market conditions. So the idea would be to then proceed with these discussions when the new village manager is in place and try and proceed with that one and see if, A, you know. Is there interest in prepayment? What does that mean to how much is refinanced and then what are market conditions do that? So that is my report. But I did want to give everybody an update.
Thank you. And any other trustee reports? I'm going to follow back.
Did we have, I'm sorry, did we have a motion on the warrant list?
No, but it's not, if it's out of order on the agenda, because.
Oh, sorry.
So I have the, the meeting minutes next to approve on the agenda from the May 25th meeting. And then, and then the pay warrant is the next item after that, so.
I just moved it all together.
I know you did.
But no, did not, did not make a motion.
If, are the meeting minutes for the May 25th meeting, has everyone looked at them? Are they good with them?
I'm good.
If somebody want to make a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Micho, was that you?
Yep.
Okay, roll call, please. Amy, thank you.
Okay, trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trusty O'Connor.
Aye.
Trusty O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trusty Chris Meyer.
Aye.
And trustee Borowski.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Now, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the monthly pay warrant.
I moved, we approved it.
Moved by trustee Chris Meyer. That was seconded by trustee O'Connor.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, trustee Borowski.
Yes, aye.
Uh, trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trusty O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trusty O'Connor.
Aye.
And trustee Micho.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the village engineers report.
All right, I will be brief, get five items to highlight here. The first is not on the engineers report in your packet. Just wanted to let everyone know, if you haven't seen it, there was a pedestrian light on Robert Parker Coffin Road that was struck by an errant vehicle about a week and a half ago. The light was taken down for safety reasons. It was being held up by a tree, so. We're working with the contractor to get pricing and procure parts for the reinstallation. North Cruder Road is moving along nicely. They'll have the southern two-thirds of the road ready for paving here in a, a couple of weeks and they'll then. Get the northern third ready for paving, so. Hopefully they're moving along and looks like they're on schedule, so middle of July is still a, a good target for them, weather depending. Lake Michigan Water, interim manager Bolling and myself met with Buffalo Grove a couple of weeks ago and apologized for the typo on the engineers report. It was May 26th that we met with them. Anyway, Buffalo Grove is updating their, their term sheet so that the village can have additional discussions. To pursue a connection to Buffalo Grove with the current data. Illinois Route 53, the drain tile survey that we were under contract with Huddleston McBride to complete. Huddleston McBride went, went dormant and interim manager Bolling and myself last week made the, the switch to a. Different contractor that can be out there in a couple of weeks to get that done so that we can have that resolved. Staying on the theme of drain tiles. American Underground was out at Lake Eleanor Estates last Friday to clean, televise some drain tile. Everything that was in Eila Township was in good condition. Everything but 10 feet in Poles Nursery was in good condition. But everything in Lake Eleanor Estates could not be televised because it was underwater. I have yet to get the report, but I will have additional conversations with the HOA once that comes in. So with that, I will entertain questions on anything else.
Jeff, have you heard from somebody on Creekside about the pond?
Yes, Eileen was her first name. Her last name is escaping me right now. We went out there. You know, as she iterated to us, everything looks good on her property. The issue is the pond to the north. We were unable to access the property and we are attempting to. Get in contact with that owner so that we can get that resolved and more information.
Okay, if you recall. Okay, if you recall, there was a problem there maybe a year, year and a half ago. Um, and it was, and the, and the pipes were just full and, and therefore it didn't drain.
Okay, okay. Um, so, yeah, even Eileen was, uh, thinking it's the same thing. It's a lack of maintenance. I understand, uh, ownership, uh, of the property that has the pond on it recently changed hands.
Thanks. Jeff, what about the IDAT permitting on the bike path?
IDAT permitting of the bike path, we were down to, uh, two, uh, minor comments and, uh, those were resolved and, uh, resubmitted back to IDAT. We should have actual permit, uh, bond forms, which is basically their approval. And then those get executed once the contractor is selected because the contractor has to post the bond.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, can we, uh, keep us moving?
End of report.
Thank you. Um, so now it's time for public comment. Jay Griffith, Griffith, if you're actually still here and you want to say something, please speak up.
Yeah, I'm here, Bill. I apologize to everybody for, for, for joining late, but, uh, I am here.
Got it. We, we did pass the, uh, the intergovernmental agreement, um, with the, um, the county, uh, for the, uh, addition of the, um, the additional screening, so.
Yeah, that, that's wonderful. And I, I did, I, I did think I hear that. That's about when I joined.
Got it. So, yeah, so it's, um, you know, per the, um, per the agreement, uh, you know, the, your, uh, HOA will pick up the 15,000 of it and, um, we're gonna pick up the rest and they're gonna, um, hopefully get that done in the spring. Uh, they will get it done in the spring. They're gonna get, working on it, uh, right now, but it has to go through, I don't know if you heard Mara talk about the fact that it's gotta go, uh, through their board approval, um, and everything else before they can, you know, get this thing moving. But, uh, it's good news.
Yeah, uh, and thank you, thank you all for, for doing that. I know it's, uh, you know, it's been a long drawn out process, but it certainly is gonna make our residents here very happy to hear that we're still on track for that.
Yeah, thank you for your support, Jay, on that one and, and working with us. I know it took a while, so, um, but let everyone know the good news, it was passed.
Okay, and then the check, what, to Bill Jacob?
I, I would suggest not, and that's not something to say publicly.
Yeah, okay.
We'll figure out, we'll figure out how that, the, the money flows, um, you know, it'll be to the village.
Yeah, because my understanding, and again, I apologize for, for joining a little late and not hearing the whole thing, but my understanding is now we are at, uh, a full payment this year and then a 5% holdback until the end of the project. Is that more or less accurate?
Yeah, 95% of it this year and, um, and the balance, uh, when it's done, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, just let me know, uh, whenever you guys need the cash and, um, you know, we've already approved it, so we can get that money out immediately.
Yeah, no, thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here.
All right, thanks, thanks again, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Um, any other, any other public comment? If not, there is one item I, I would like us to go into, um, executive session to talk about. And I'm gonna read the language Vic gave me. Hopefully I've, I'm gonna read this correctly. Um, and then, um, somebody will, I'll read the motion and if somebody could actually, um, make that motion, um, we can do that. Um, and it's, I, the motion is to enter into executive session for the purposes authorized under section 2C6 of the Open Meetings Act. Vic, did I get that right? Would somebody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee O'Connor?
Second.
Seconded by trustee O'Reilly, that's a roll call.
Okay, uh, trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Uh, trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
And trustee Borowski?
Aye.
All right, uh, motion carried. I'm going to, uh, send you into executive session. Um, everyone else can, can leave, right? So, um, give it one second for everyone to hang up.
All right, good night, everybody.
Bill, can you send me that, um, what you just read?
Yes, I can, absolutely. I have it. Yep, no worries.
Excellent, thank you.
You're not, you're not, I don't think you're needed in executive session, so.
Okay, very good. All right, enjoy the rest of the meeting. Have a good night, guys.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh,
Great, where's my breakout rooms? Breakout, there we go.
Thank you for watching this video. If you enjoyed it, please give it a like and subscribe to our channel. We will be making more videos soon. Please do not forget to check out our other channel. Thanks for watching, we will see you next time.
All right, so we're all back, right? So I received three, actually technically four trustee applications, if you will. So I will let you know who they are in an email that I will send to you. So you know who they are. But that's nothing for the clerk, zero, zero.
Okay.
Okay.
Sad.
Sorry, Amy. But that's what I received. But I will send you an email. So you know what I've got. And and I'll do that so that I don't share that with everyone right now, the public right now. Confidential.
Now move to adjourn.
Yeah, moved adjourned, moved by Chris Browski, seconded by
Second.
By trustee Michel.
Hey, trustee Michel.
Hi.
Trustee Michel.
Aye.
That was an aye. Excellent. Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
And trustee Browski.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.